This is the Franklin Township Public Library Trustees Meeting. It is Wednesday, January 27th, and the meeting is being held by Zoom. I will call the meeting to order, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I now like to call the role. Agnes Kula Banya, I see that you're here. Agnes? Edward?
Yes.
I'm the president.
Iris Kislin? Yes. You're here, okay. Kevin McNeil?
Yes, here.
NBC?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
I'm here, my name is Nick Champa. And Tiana Gresham, I don't see her here. And I think she said she was going to be busy this day.
Right.
We'll have to hear from her on that, okay.
Yes.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. Schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to The Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are available at the reference desk. I now like to turn the meeting over to January for nomination and election of officers.
Are there any nominations for the Office of President?
Well, I'll nominate, Nick, if you are still willing.
I second.
I am willing.
Are there any, okay, are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye. Right.
Congratulations to Nick.
Thank you very much.
Back to you.
Thank you for a vote of confidence. For the Office of Secretary, are there any nominations? I would like to nominate Iris Kislin.
I second.
I don't believe nominations need a second, but I appreciate that. Are there any other nominations? Iris, will you accept such a nomination?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, those in favor of Iris Kislin for Secretary signify by raising their hand. Okay, thank you. And for Vice President/Treasurer, are there any nominations? Nobody wants to be Vice President or NBC?
You nominating yourself, NBC?
You must.
NBC, are you nominating yourself?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I was before.
Yes, certainly, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none? Those in favor of NBC for another term as Vice President/Treasurer, please signify by raising their hand. Those opposed? Nobody's opposed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Iris and NBC, and thank you for your past service in these same offices. Okay. The next item on the agenda is for public comment. Bob, are there any members of the public?
You should.
No, okay.
The public.
We will, we have no members of the public and therefore no comment from the public. Next, we'd like to discuss the minutes from the December 16th, 2020 meeting. You've all gotten them in your packet, and I'm sure you've all read them and maybe memorized them. Are there any comments?
But then by standing.
Did you have some comment, NBC?
Oh, okay.
Okay, I just have one minor comment with the
What is your one?
Twice there in the public comments, the last three words are "to the public." They should not be there. The meeting was not closed to the public. It was just plain closed, so, but that's a
You know, you caught that last time.
Yeah, yeah.
I missed it this time, okay.
I understand, okay.
I'll get it right soon.
There are motion to accept the minutes with the minor modification. Okay, NBC?
Okay.
Seconds, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are accepted. Now I'd like to move on to the, to January's reports, both financial and and otherwise, and operation.
Let's do financial first.
Okay. My screen paper.
I, I had a question on eighty-seven percent on the percent of the budget on the fourth line down, which is maintenance.
Right, that's a one-time yearly charge.
Okay, I just, that's what I thought, okay.
January, are there any, is there anything you'd like to point out about the financial statements?
No, the reason, on the Franklin Park expenses, the reason the building and maintenance line nine twelve is so high for the year is because of the the air conditioning, the HVAC actually system that you may recall is problematic, and we're hoping that we can get out of there before less than more money.
Okay, going back to the all branches, item nine twenty-six, library materials seem to be at thirty-four percent rather than the expected fifty percent. Is this because of fewer materials from COVID?
It fluctuates a lot. A lot of the stuff we buy, we'll buy, you'll see a big bill every few months, like when we borrow the, when we buy the tattletapes. It runs like that, it doesn't, it's not always consistent month to month.
So this is a okay, so it might come back to normal. Thank you.
Yep, and just one, just one question on the, the same maintenance automation and nine oh eight, that's a one-time, so in other words, that's, that's it for the year, right? No, you won't
You took that nine oh eight?
Uh, yes.
Nine oh eight?
Yeah, the maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's just a surplus, the unused budget, that's not
Well, there may be, there may be a smaller additional, it's got many components. It's our, it's our OPAC system, it's the catalog, and it's everything that we use. And there may be another, another smaller one coming in, but this was the bulk, the big yearly payment.
All right.
I guess that's it for the financials.
Okay, so, um, our young adult librarian has gotten, gotten the library two grants. I only mentioned one in my report. The one I mentioned in my report is the Baker and Taylor Collection Grant for a thousand dollars. But since I wrote this, we also learned she got a Yalsa Great Book Giveaway Grant that we're getting either a thousand or fifteen hundred books, and these are all young adult books, and these are all for the Northern Branch. Right? So that's a really big head start on our collection for that branch library. And we started using a service called Canopy. And Canopy is three, thirty thousand videos and has a lot of older movies and things that people often ask for. And as I mentioned before, we have the three winter reading programs going on. And just a comment about the Franklin Park Branch, even though the number of visitors is down quite a bit since last year, the branch manager noted that the number of materials checked out was only down by four hundred and twenty-eight items, which is good news.
Wonderful.
It's good news. And that's all I have. Oh, and then, should I do the town hall?
Pardon?
Should I talk about the town hall meeting? Or did you want to in the president's report?
No, you might as well do, say that on the town hall meeting, I have sent every one of you, all of the trustees, a copy of the letter that went out, so there's some familiarity, go, go ahead. January, you, you want to talk about the town hall meeting? And also, I would encourage everybody to sign in for it.
Refresh the date, I know I put it in the book.
March first.
March first, right.
And the planning board is March seventeenth. St. Patrick's Day. So this is the meeting where we introduce the plans for the Southern Branch to the people who live nearby. The architect will be there, will be there. Hopefully, it'll go better than the Pocket Park meeting.
Why, whatever do you mean?
Okay.
Wait a second, I'm challenging it.
And that's what's to say.
Hey, thank you.
So March first, library hearing, and when, the seventeenth is the planning board?
March seventeenth.
We have to wear green?
What time is it on the first? I don't have it, I just want to write it down on my calendar.
March first was the seventh.
Seven.
The planning board.
Seventeenth is seven thirty.
Okay.
So does everyone understand what the town hall meeting? Well, it's not really a town hall, what the hearing is about. It's going to be the way to the public, what the library is going to entail, where it's going to go, what it's gonna, you know, a basic design, what the exterior plans will be, parking lots, things like that. And it's the opportunity for people to weigh in and say, you know, you should, are you gonna have a book reading area or whatever?
Right.
Or, I don't want, I don't want the library, or don't cut down the trees next to my house, or it's gonna mess up traffic, or why are you moving out of the other place? I like it there, et cetera. But January was alluding to was, we just had a hearing the other week on Willow Park, which was a little pocket park, you know, neighborhood park that Councilman Geltary had suggested, and people got on and were very much against it. And council has decided not to go ahead with it.
I see.
We may get that.
Hmm. You sure? Yeah, you're kidding?
We may get.
NBC, I think someone
Yeah.
You ready?
Too late.
NBC, can you mute? So we may get that.
All right, you can mute it.
You know, the difference to me is that was a park meant to serve the people in the area. And if the people in the area don't want it, then that says something. We have to look at this a little differently because this will serve a lower third of the town.
Right.
Not the whole town. So I understand, look, I wouldn't want a library built right next door to me. I live in a very tree area. But we may need to look at that differently. So they may have a good point. The other thing is they may just convince us we need more buffer. One thing I would like to make sure that the library is placed in such a way that it's as far from any existing house as possible, and that we leave up as many trees as possible between the library and the other houses. So everyone should come to it, and you never know what to expect.
Okay.
Will we be able to, we'll
Right, Iris.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Will we be able to, will be the ones to counteract what somebody might say, or that will be professional? You know?
The way I would, I mean, it's, it's next meeting, the way I would envision it, envision it would be, they could introduce it, let the architect speak.
So they would then defend it?
Well, no, and it depends what you're defending. If you're defending where the parking lot should be, I would think the architect
They should do.
Defend it. If you're defending, why are you doing this? Then that would be for us to defend, not the architect. And to me, the reasons to do it are, we're, we'll save money, and we're gonna have a better, better facility.
I haven't asked Jeff Reynolds yet, but he's the engineer, and he's, he's partially responsible for the placement of the building within the two-acre lot along with the drainage basin and all. So perhaps it would be a good idea for me to ask him to join.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. People may say, move it southeast or southwest, get it away from houses. And he may say, well, you can't because there's a, you know.
The utility connections is one of the issues here, so, yeah, he'd be able to speak to all of those things, maybe even better than the architect.
Would he, if somebody is annoyed that maybe too many trees are going down, if that's the case, would he then say, well, we could put X number of trees in its place in another place? So, you know, as a trade?
That's also part of what the engineer did.
Was gonna do.
Getting over the trees. And actually, somebody else did that, that would be me. A lot of the trees in there are really very small scrub trees and very poor shape.
Okay.
So there are only a few that, that even come to within the dimensions that have to be reported. So, yeah, but the engineer and it's actually the engineer's surveyor who did a, a better look at the trees and the condition of them, and the number of them, and the size of them.
But, you know, I was where, I used to live in North Brunswick. We, they were putting a shopping center adjacent to where, not near my house, but in that area, and we negotiated for burns instead of trees, which are a lot more expensive. They just built a burn in, to a blockage, and that placated everybody. So that might be a discussion that, you know, you might have with the
I think at this point, it's, I'm very impressed with the Reynolds group.
Okay.
And especially Jeff Reynolds and his ability to, to know what to do. So if I can get him to attend, I think I shall do that. And yes, we'll let the professionals take most of the talking. Is there anything else on, on the public meeting?
Yes, asked, would there be an opportunity for community members who cannot attend the town hall to look at the plan and a proposal and submit comments?
Yeah, I think they can look at it even now.
Okay.
If you look at the letter, I think there's a link, and I think it's active now. Check it before you tell me.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it. Cool.
Okay, let's move along. The next item on the written agenda says President's Report. I don't have a specific report today, although I would like to say that I was able to get a tour of the youth center on Lewis Street inside. It's a very impressive building. Very large, it's oh, I can say it's very impressive and
Yeah.
It's gone quite well. Certainly not ready to, but I did see the library area, and they did make some changes that we had talked about to the size of the office part of the library area. And I'm very impressed with it. So moving on, correspondence, I see there's thank you email from Parks and Recreation Department. Any, would you like to say anything about that, January?
I would like to say that was our great pleasure. The tree looked great.
Yes.
And we're hoping maybe we can talk them into doing it again next year, even if they don't need to.
Yeah, it was, I, I, it was a very nice display way up front as you walk in.
Yes.
And the other correspondence, again, we just talked about, is the letter that went out to a hundred ten homes in the area of the Franklin Park School. We already spoke about that. It's the invitation to the meeting.
By the way, there were probably only a dozen, I'm guessing, properties for families, addresses we need to know, we needed to notify.
That's what's a two-hundred-foot limit.
And that's all the law required.
Yes.
We could the entire area.
Yes.
Very open and let people know.
Yes. We went way beyond.
Transparency is, is a good thing.
Yep.
Okay, and Mayor, thank you, that was your suggestion. I think it was a good one. And I believe we can come out of this with good support. Okay. Is there any old business?
Yes, the resolution.
Okay. You, we all have a copy of the resolution?
And we need the resolution, it's part of the, the grant acceptance. There's some things we have to do in order to keep the grant, and this is one of the things that they're, they're requiring is that there be a resolution from the board saying that they're accepting it.
Have we done a press release that we got the grant?
Huh?
Did we do a press release that we received?
Not yet. I was kind of waiting until the town hall notice went out. I can do it now.
Yeah, we should do that.
Have you all read the the resolution? Is there any reason for me to read it?
Yes, read it.
Okay. Whereas the Franklin Township Public Library Board of Trustees desires to replace its current Southern Branch that is located in the Franklin Town Center, a strip mall, with a newly constructed building on its own site. And whereas the board established a building fund for this purpose some years ago and located a site for the new building, and whereas the library completed a successful New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act grant application and has been awarded one million, three hundred fourteen thousand dollar grant for the purpose of building a Southern Branch, now therefore be it resolved by the public, by the Franklin Township Public Library Board of Trustees that the board is accepting the above award and is approving the construction of a new Southern Branch, and will be proceeding with the project.
All right.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Passing?
Aye.
Three to five?
Aye.
Any, is anybody opposed? Okay, NBC, is that opposition?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, unmuted.
I, I see it as passing unanimously.
Yeah.
Gratefully so.
I can.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any new business? One big one.
Nick, is, is that the thing that needs to be signed, the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll probably call you sometime tomorrow afternoon and see if
I'll be home.
Drop, I, and I'll sign it, and you will sign it since it requires the secretary and the president.
I called you before to say I was home, but you didn't get my message.
Okay, sorry. Now, the contract with the architects is quite long, quite inclusive, and I've spent a good bit of time with it. I understand most of it. Have, has anybody read it and found any, any objectional, objectionable pieces?
Did our attorney look at it?
Yeah.
Yes, and had no, had no comments or additions.
And I might add that it's a standard form that the architects in the state use. It's a so there's a lot of it here that I can't imagine would really apply to us, but you never know.
The one thing that I wondered about is on page nine, with the parties, eight point two point three, the parties do not resolve the dispute mediation pursuant to, et cetera, et cetera, that would go to litigation in court. I would have thought we'd go to arbitration, but I mean, that's, I, I just was surprised, no way Jack do it.
And what does that, what part is that he was referring to?
Eight point two point three.
Aye, we see the, a little bit more than half on the page, there's a box that's checked.
Right.
That would indicate that there's a, if there's a dispute as opposed to arbitration. But if the lawyer says that's the way to do it, then I, I, that's fine. I just would have thought we would have gone to arbitration, but the lawyer may have a reason. That's fine.
I think this gives us incentive to solve our differences ourselves.
Yes.
And, and as I understand it, this is a difference between ourselves, the owners of the project, and the architect, rather than a difference between ourselves and the contractor. Is there a motion to adopt, to accept the contract with the architects as presented?
I so move.
Second, Edward.
Okay.
Wait, who was the second?
Iris has moved, Edward is second. Is there any discussion?
Do we have, do we have a date as far as when this might be opened?
Do you mean a date for the contract or a date?
No, date for when this is all finished.
No.
Okay.
No. There's still, there are still several steps to, to go through. For instance, the subdivision of the land, which I understand is going to be a rubber stamp, the resolution by the township council to approve the land for the use for a library, and of course, our town meeting.
Right.
And then there's the bidding process.
Yeah.
It's hard to say how long each of these steps it's hard to say how long each of these steps takes, but each of them is important and must be gone through. So is there any other discussion about this motion? That's on the floor. Those in favor of uh passing this motion signify by raising their hand? Everybody? Okay, I see this as being unanimous.
Nick, do we have a date for the, for the uh north library where the, where the center is going to go with the library and it's?
Well, the building isn't completed, but it's well underway. I might defer that question to Mayor Kramer. Uh, have you heard any estimates? I, I, I would say they're probably gonna miss September twenty twenty-one.
Right.
I'm also it's a big project and I, 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 I think they'll they're not gonna miss it by a year. They're gonna probably miss it by
Half a year.
A much smaller increment. So.
Are we, January, are we ready? Or getting ready to move, you know? Do a, a set business plan as to who's gonna move there, you know, what's, now we're gonna be in there that.
Yeah, I'm working on it. Yeah.
I, I was thinking that as far as publicity goes, if maybe uh working with the Board of Education in some way. Uh, I don't know if they, you know, what the, what the school situation will be, if there's, will be assemblies or what. But I think getting the word out to the parents of the children in the schools nearby so that they know about it, that know that there's a, a, you know, a center, know that there's a library, what's there, rather than just word of mouth of letting the kids um, bring home the information. I think that we have to do some for better, lack of a better word, advertising to the parents of the kids in the, in the, the schools nearby.
Yes, there's the Pine Grove Manor School. Um I certainly agree with you, but uh
I mean, we have time.
A distance.
Yeah, we have time, but it's just, just going through my head now.
Okay. So.
By the time it's, maybe the brain won't be working as well.
Is there any other new business? Seeing none, move on. Um Bob, is there any, have any members of the public uh logged in? Okay, so we will not have the public portion of the meeting. Confirmation, the next date for our next meeting is February twenty-sixth. Um, and I'm sure it will be virtual also.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move?
Okay, Ed.
Second.
I think Iris beat you, Kevin.
I think she did.
You know, she's.
No.
That's all.
Mayor was in there too.
No fight, but Kevin, no.
Okay, those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
I see this as unanimous. And uh, thank you all for joining this meeting and we'll see you on February twenty-sixth.
Well, February twenty-sixth is a Friday.
It is?
Oh, gosh.
Well, on my calendar, February twenty-sixth is Friday. February twenty-fourth is a Wednesday.
Oh, that seems to be the same as my calendar.
You are right. Irish, you were right. It's twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth.
I must have been looking at last year's calendar.
Okay. Um, everyone mark that down and of, and, and again, be sure to be available March first for the uh public meeting. Um, you all learn a lot from it. Um, okay, so uh
Absolutely.
So where are we with adjournment? I think we already adjourned.
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
Okay.
Iris. Iris, can you give phone number again?
That's on by again. Nine, can Iris give that number again, the nine seven three?
Yeah, wait, 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 I gotta get the phone.
Nine seven three four eight three.
One three zero zero. And then
Thirty thirty.
One of them is extension one oh seven four, and that number is good from nine to five. And if it's busy, the best thing is to just dedicate yourself. You're gonna do this for a couple of hours. If it's busy, you, you click uh off and then go right to redial on your phone and just keep doing it until somebody answers the phone. And they, they, this number closes at five. But if you call back and don't ask for the extension, extension, the extension I got through on was one oh seven four, but they he goes home at, one oh seven four goes home at five. But if you keep calling back, there are other numbers they will answer after five o'clock. So it, sometimes it takes days. I, I can't tell you, you can go crazy. But I was determined to get it and I finally got it.
And who is it that you're calling?
I'm calling, this is the newer community health center. And the one I went to today was at ninety-two Ferry Street. And uh, there's a big sign outside that says LabCorp. And what surprised me is that the room that I went to was a room that held ten people. The chairs were all separated. And when I went in the room to wait, I, I was double masked, thinking, you know, I'm gonna have a lot of people in here and whatever. I was the only person waiting to get a shot at, at eleven o'clock in the morning.
What's that?
Evan, what's middle number again? Or what? I still didn't get the middle number.
I'm sorry, I'll give it to you again. Nine seven three four eight three one three zero zero.
Okay.
And the extension I used was one oh seven four, but let it ring and, and don't put any extension in and just catch whoever's there, because one side is Irvington, one side is Orange, one side is East Orange, one side is Newark. And I, I got the Newark one. My friend is going next week to Irvington. Another one is going to uh, Orange. Okay.
I overheard, I overheard someone said they had, they got, they had, they got theirs at the uh college, Ri- Raritan Valley.
Raritan Valley Community College.
Know how to get in touch.
Kevin, did you register with the state? Did you register with the state COVID? Because then, then you'll get the updates and they will tell you. They also was going down to uh Rowan College, which is an hour and a half ride. I wasn't gonna go to Rowan College. And some of my friends that went to Rowan after standing online, they were sent away because they didn't have any more vaccine left. So to drive an hour and a half and then stand online and then they didn't have any left. That's
Yeah.
You know?
Uh, I, I, I think maybe that problem is gonna be uh alleviated now. It seems like they're uh trying resolves. But anyway, uh, thanks for the information.
JFK just, Kevin.
See everybody next.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Another site, Robert. Ju- JFK just opened another site in Edison. That just opened in the senior center. So that, that'll start coming through.
Yeah, I think it's gonna start getting a little bit easier now. So hopefully.
Hope so.
Hopefully, well everybody stay safe. It don't make sense to uh come this far with the vaccine and
But, but if you get the.
Let our guards down, so.
Wait, but Kevin, if you, if all of you.
We'll see each other next month.
If you start, if you get your first vaccine, try to get the appointment then for the second. Because some places are not giving appointments for the second, then you have to go through it all over again. So try to get your appointment for the second at the same time. I got a card saying what time and what date. So try to do that. It makes your life easier.
Thank you so much. And also I heard on the news that they said to remember which um vaccine that you got.
Yes.
Because they, they said they want you to get the same one, although they said in extreme circumstances, you can you can mix them up, but they, they don't really uh, they don't really want that. But anyway. Thank you so much, Iris, and everybody enjoy uh the rest of your day.